Good evening. Welcome to this August 1st, 2022, meeting in the Norfolk City Council. We'll call the meeting to order and call your attention to the Open Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers. If you now please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just and eternal.
Rule call, please, Brian.
Granquist.
Here.
Arns.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
McCarthy.
Here.
Muirin.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Clausen.
Here.
Hildebrand.
Here.
Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda with two slight changes. There are amendments to items number eight and item number 11.
Your Honor, I'll be abstaining from the vote for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. If no discussion, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative. Granquist, Arns, Merrill, Muirin, Jackson, Clausen, Hildebrand. Abstaining from the vote, McCarthy. Motion carries.
Right, then I would look for a motion to approve the full agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. If no discussion, please vote.
Missing one over there. There we go. All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Right, that takes us to item number 28 on the council agenda under public hearings and related action. We'll kick off this public hearing to consider a blighted and substandard declaration for the area referred to as the Big Red Keno area. And to jumpstart the discussion, we'll hear first from Randy Gates, our city finance officer.
Yes, Your Honor. Including the agenda packet is a blight and substandard study prepared by JEO. And Jeff Ray is here from JEO to go over this study with the council. So I don't want to steal his thunder, but basically it's about a 100-acre area that starts on the west with the Big Red Keno parlor and goes east and then down south to include Sunset Plaza on the southeast side. And the study looked at the blighted and substandard criteria and statutes and concluded that it met the criteria and could be declared blighted and substandard. Well, turn it over to Jeff Ray, and he can go over that much more detail than I can.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, and your staff. Randy, about particular review and working through this process. I did do a handout here of my presentations. You can kind of all along with her a little quick. Just going to give a quick summary of the study. I actually did that myself. So if you know what the area and looking at the whole area, there to be determined potentially as blight and substandard blight. So real quick, I just want to give you an introduction of the study area, who's lying, why we chose the particular study area and the boundary that was there. It's a, we'll talk about that as we get to that point. What was the analysis and all of those findings? And what is my recommendation to you as a professional? So the introduction is, what is a blight study? To a blight study, you're authorized to do, there you go. Sorry. My, you're authorized to do blight and substandard determination studies. And that is a very kind of ugly name that has a negative connotation. Ultimately, what really allows you to do is do tax increment financing for economic development purposes to remove some of those characteristics of blight and substandard that are under the state statute of the Nebraska Community Development Law. So the process, real quick, for those who aren't familiar with it, is you declare the area blighted and substandard, which is what is the question before you here this evening. From that, you would develop a generalized redevelopment plan, a specific redevelopment plan to address some of those items, and then potentially implement tax increment financing within that district. TIF can be used anywhere within that district. And can only be used, the TIF generated can only be used within that district. You have other districts that are declared blight and substandard. TIF has to remain within those districts. You can't cross boundaries. Okay? All right. So some of those characteristics are listed here. A substantial number of the deteriorating structures in that area. Is there unsanitary, unsafe conditions? And here, I'm summarizing what the state statute is. Stable or decreasing population in the area. Are the structures more than 40 years of age? I didn't decide that. The state legislature said 40 years is old, not me. Economic and social liabilities. Is there a diversity of ownership which would preclude you from congregating lands together and making it more difficult to redevelop? Has it been in the area, has it been in the city and unimproved for more than 40 years? Is there a high density population? Are there special taxes in that area? And then we have substandard characteristics as well. They're very similar. Which again, dilapidation, deterioration, age of structure, and obsolescence of those structures. Dangerous conditions of life due to fire or property, due to life or property due to fire or other such causes. Inadequate ventilation, sanitation, open space, air. If there's any unusual conditions of title, more than 120% of unemployment in the national average, and if the per capita income is less than the citywide average. So the study area, you can see delineated there in that purple line. And Randy had described this earlier. Really starts up in the northwest corner there with where Big Red Keno is currently located. Includes the open space vacant area behind there. There's a wetlands in there. Kind of meanders on down and stays mostly off of the front edge of 275. Many of those buildings didn't meet those criteria, although we looked at some of those. And then tried to stay away from, I think it's 13th Street or Highway 81, there on the far east in that southeastern corner, where some of those areas were already included in a previous study. So we can't double dip and count those again. So this is the area that was studied and looked at and determined that where most of these characteristics were potentially there to look at. And they also had a high potential for some infill and/or redevelopment in this particular area. Go ahead. So one of the first things we looked at were the structural ratings. Went through, literally drove every street, looked at every structure, residential as well as commercial, rated them. And about 45% were identified as deteriorating. So if you think of deteriorating structures based off of the HUD standards, if they get to that deteriorating stage, they typically need a professional tradesperson to do something. New siding, new roofing, new windows, new doors, those types of things. Something beyond what the normal homeowner or business owner would normally take care of. So not just paint. That wouldn't qualify into that deteriorating stage. So there's just one picture of a multifamily unit there that we could see. And you can also see the dots that are on the GIS map as to how those were dispersed. Many of them were in residential areas, and then a few in the commercial. Street layout. So you get some really unique things going on here. Street layout is a little bit more than just public streets. We look at street layout. We look at the sidewalk. We look at that also being the first piece of your drainage system. So as rain falls, it gets collected there. So we look at the storm sewer and consider that as part of that whole street systems and how that collects your storm water and runs off. There are some several open channels in there as well. Much of this area lacked sidewalk, either the residential or the commercial area, or they were in poor condition. Some of the streets were considered incomplete and just had dead end and went into nowhere. You could see on the one site just west or just east of the Big Keno in the picture on the top. Irregular lot layout, irregular size and shape. There were many irregular shapes and sizes in this area. It's working for an engineering firm. I always see all these little rectangles everywhere. And apparently, those engineering firms were not working here at this time because lots of irregular shapes. Some of it was dictated off of some drainage patterns, I'm sure, and then as well as the highway. But created some unusual conditions, make it difficult for building and/or redevelopment. Some very narrow lots, difficult to build, landlocked lots that actually don't have access, legal access. And then some just weird shapes that came out of obsolete plating that people had done previously in the past. Potential unsafe conditions. There were documentation in the study as well that showed some debris piles that were there. So maybe some other hazardous conditions that would harbor vermin or rodents that could potentially carry diseases. Pools of water for mosquitoes as well. Tripping hazards over sidewalks and the lack of sidewalks, people walking in the street. There was some location of a 100-year floodplain here as well as most of the area in the 500-year floodplain. We'll have to, you guys all know what flooding looks like here. So some of those were considered in this condition, as well as the structures that are of over 40 years of age. Some of them could potentially be of the, create those hazards as well for them. And some areas of brush overgrowth could potentially be for fire hazards as well. Here's some other specific conditions within a parking lot and the degradation, degradation, I should say, of the site improvements. Railings that are missing and/or loose, debris in sewer inlets that could potentially cause fire or cause problems with water drainage and storm drainage and so forth. Age of structure. So the average age of commercial or residential structure is stipulated by state statute. Here, the average age of the commercial structures was found to be of 44 years of age. So it did exceed that threshold under the state statute. The residential did not. So if we turn all those layers on within the GIS, and we look at it, we say, where are these characteristics? Where aren't these characteristics? And you can see, it was dispersed throughout this entire region. For many of those, almost all the parcels contained at least one characteristic. Most had numerous characteristics. Some of the ones that aren't shown here in yellow maybe only had a lack of sidewalk. And I didn't feel that that was warranted enough to go ahead and distinguish that as a prominent enough condition to be listed there. So overall, the recommendation for you would be to declare the area that was studied and delineated there as the Big Red Keno area to be designated as blight and substandard. Nine of the 12 criteria for blighting were found to be of a prevalent existence. And three of the four of the substandards were felt to be there. The ones that weren't, we didn't go into great extensive research, but we didn't see anything on special taxes or title conditions that popped out to us on our random search that we did through that. With that, tick whatever questions you or staff would have.
I'll ask a couple. Why do we call it the Big Red Keno area? It seems odd that we'd use a business name to name an area.
That was my client. I think we originally started off calling it the Sunset Plaza area. But that felt disingenuine on our part because that wasn't really who had actually hired and paid for this blight study to be done.
All right. So that's where it's coming from. I got you. Which is probably why I would follow up with my next question, why it includes Big Red Keno as part of this.
Yeah, so that site, can we go back to the map? If you look at that, that one's good. Their site that they have there is rather large and includes quite a bit of open vacant property that could be developed or redeveloped, including a wetland on there. And was one of the, one of the reasons why we were specifically looking at how could that area be developed.
I get it now. Yeah, I appreciate that. That's helpful. Thank you.
Typically, these blight studies are driven, not always, but in a lot of cases, by interest in redevelopment plans. I do appreciate that. Jeff, you found a way to bring this forward before us, I think. Because of a lot of the things that you presented to us, there is justification for this area being declared blighted and substandard. And again, as you put it, it's kind of a ugly phrasing, and it doesn't create a lot of warm feelings, warm feelings among people. But that is a state law definition, and this is how the process of implementation of TIF works. To me, this area does very much meet that, meet the criteria before us. And taking this step does help position, help position the area for redevelopment. Again, as you stated, interest specifically in the Big Red Keno area. I don't know how much you guys want to or willing to talk about potential redevelopment plans there tonight. Certainly don't have to, but I would give you the opportunity to, if you, if you like.
We have the client and council here tonight, so I'll let them.
Good evening. Andrew Willis, 233 South 13th Street in Lincoln.
And Spencer Lombardo, 18210 Camelback in Gretna.
So I'm with Klein Williams Law Firm. And so I guess the first thing, obviously Jeff's study, I would say, you know, from our perspective, it does meet all the blight and substandard criteria, but mainly testifying in support of the blight study because it really is the first step to allowing a potential redevelopment project on the site. And if it's passed, we would foresee coming forward with a TIF application very soon afterwards. Spencer, it's.
The, the project that we're looking at specifically is 100% multifamily. So it would be housing. We would call it, we'd probably call it workforce housing. Would not be super luxury. It would be not affordable under the standards of Section 8 or anything like that. But it would be affordable as far as, as building it as economically as possible and, and making it affordable to the general population.
And really, the key for that project, to make it affordable, even lowercase a affordable, the workforce housing, it really does need TIF. It doesn't work out without it. So this project that would be coming forward, it depends completely on this decision.
True. Appreciate that. Yeah. And I understand it's hard. Yeah, working within the specific area, density is important, and we've focused a lot on that. And new housing opportunities that enter into that affordable range because, as we all know, it's very, very challenging right now to build truly affordable housing. So we appreciate your interest in this project, potential redevelopment interest in a TIF application. And again, for public record, this is the first step towards that. Thank you. Any other questions for the potential developers? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to make comment can do so now. Seeing in hearing note one, we'll move to close the hearing and move to item number 29. Look for a motion to consider resolution number 2022-30 declaring the Big Red Keno area blighted and substandard.
So moved.
Motion second. Discussion, council. Are any further questions? Okay, hearing none. Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2022-30 is adopted.
All right, that moves us to our regular agenda. And item number 30, we look for a motion to consider approval of ordinance number 5795 annexing a tract of land generally located southeast of the intersection at Highway 35 and East Benjamin Avenue. As a note, this ordinance passed on first reading at the July 18th city council meeting.
I'll offer for consideration ordinance number 5795 on second read.
Second.
Motion second. And to refresh our memories, we'll hear from Steve Ramis, our public works director.
Mayor and council, this is the second reading for an annexation on the east side of town. It is south of Benjamin Avenue, east of Highway 35. The very tip of the project or the very tip of the property would join Benjamin Avenue right of way. It extends south, then adjacent to the county line. This is part of, there's a, a larger section that'll be, or chunk of property that'll be retained by the, by the owner. And then there are three parcels on the north side of this that they intend to plat out as a function of this annexation. Answer any questions council has?
Any questions or discussion, council? Okay, your natural title, please.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska to annex to said city a tract of land lying in the east half of the northeast quarter, lying south of Highway 35 right of way, including the highway right of way, lying adjacent to said tract in Section 24, Township 24 North, Range 1 West, at 6:00 PM, Madison County, Nebraska, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, and provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5795 carries on second reading.
Item 31, look for a motion to consider approval of change order number 1F with Elkhorn Paving Construction Company Incorporated for the concrete improvements, 2021-1 project resulting in a net increase of $68,162.19.
I'll make a motion for consideration or approval of change order number 1F.
Second.
Motion second. For some background on this, again, Steve, please.
Mayor and council, this is our 2021 concrete improvement, or concrete repair project. It is spread across multiple streets here in the community. I'll read those. Monroe Avenue, east of First Street, out towards the wastewater treatment plant. Hillview Drive, Sheridan to south of College View. 18th Street from Bel Air Road to north of, north of the cemetery property. Woodcrest from Sycamore Avenue, east to Maple. Taylor Avenue from west, west of 24th Street to 25th Street. West Monroe Avenue between 15th Street and 16th Street. And 27th Street from Norfolk Avenue, north, half a block. This is part, partially part of our, our effort to expand and maintain the dollars that we're putting into street repairs on an annual basis around the community. There were also some dollars applied to this as part of council discretion on, on funding that became available and prioritizing it on these street repairs. Overall, the project came in, you'll see here, about 5.5% increase in quantities of repair. The actual cost increase was about 5.2%. So slightly lower. The reason you see that difference between, in terms of a percent increase, we're already there. And so as a function of defining where we're going to start and stop while we're out there, we're already on site. So that difference of about 0.3% is really tied up in the mobilization. Since we're already on site, we're just paying for the quantity repair. We're not paying the mo. We generally budget anticipating, you know, something in that 5% increase in these projects when we go out on site. We plan these about a year in advance. There's other deterioration that occurs during that time between when we plan it and actually get out there. We also run into situations where as we're doing the demo, we run into more deterioration. The slab right next to it breaks down, or, or we get, with the ASR, we'll see a lot of scaling. In this particular case, we also expanded the work on 27th to get to the north of the south approach into the hospital. So that in a subsequent project, as we come back, we're all, we have one good approach into the hospital. We're not needing to deal with two approaches into the hospital. So there was, I would say, we probably expanded the hospital 30 to 40 feet more to the north than what we were originally planning so we could get through that approach. Oh, yeah, this is the final change order. Answer any questions council would have?
Just one. You, most of these, most of the funding for this is coming from general budget, did not come out of the chat?
This is, this is, this is, there were dollars that were freed up.
CARES Act, I believe.
Yeah, yes. It was CARES Act revenue that came in to support. I don't remember the exact numbers on this, but I would say probably supporting about 50% of the project.
50%, and the rest of it came out general?
Came out of chat.
Chat. Oh, okay. Got you.
Total cost in the project to date. There's some testing. We have a, you know, we always, we have our testing contract and stuff in there that's outside of this. But with the, with bringing the project in, $1,367,394. There's about another $7,500 out there in testing. So it brings it all in within what we're tracking for cash flow in the project.
So within, within normal budget, and quite honestly, the 5.5% is mainly the quantity.
Correct. You know, in a new, new, new reconstruction project like Benjamin Avenue, we wouldn't expect to see that. We'd expect that to come in maybe within a percent, percent and a half. But when you're doing these concrete repair projects, you're, it's a panel here, a panel there. 5% is really pretty reasonable to see for that type of project.
And those are projects, I think it's worth noting, we probably wouldn't have been able to get to had we not dedicated a portion of that CARES Act funding to it. Because it was, it was a significant amount of money that we used to help accelerate some of the timelines for these projects.
There was, there was, if you're remembering some additional dollars, there were additional dollars that went into the asphalt melanoverlay project from that.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item 32, look for a motion to consider resolution number 2022-31 to allow placement of emergency temporary housing units on private properties owned by Behavioral Health Specialists Incorporated, addressed as 923 East Norfolk Avenue, 105 Recovery Road, 107 Recovery Road, and 111 Recovery Road in Norfolk.
I'll offer for consideration resolution 2022-31.
Second.
Motion in second. And for some background on this, Andy Colvin, our city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Well, if you remember, I believe it was the last, was it the last council meeting? Yeah. The last council meeting, you approved placement of these type of structures on property owned by Orphan Grain Train, if you remember, along 7th Street. Since that time, and things obviously have been very fluid with the projects and the relocation for Ukrainian refugees and where to place them for these housing units. So plans have changed. And a private party in the community, I believe, has moved to purchase that site on their own from the behavioral, what we'll call the behavioral health site. And so we're just allowing placement of these structures on that overall property, I think, to the north, north of that. Same thing we did with the property on 7th Street. We're just allowing it on this site as well right now.
So, yeah, thank you, Andy. As we understand it, this property would take the place of the previous property in terms of the temporary housing being cited? Or not necessarily?
I didn't know they were, were they still doing it on the 7th Street site? I thought they pulled back from that.
We have not been, I have not been advised that they were no longer doing it there. We left it open. We can rescind that if that's the council, council's desire. But we figured that, seeing as this is an emergency that's been so fluid, we wanted to leave the orphan grain train the opportunity to do this if they so desire. But if that is the desire, if we do want to rescind that, you know, in the future, we can always do that. But as it stands, if we pass this, that temporary housing, the emergency housing, as the definition is contained here, would only be for this property, the behavioral health, as well as that 7th Street orphan grain train property.
Let me rephrase that. Anecdotally, there's been reports that they may not be placing it on the 7th Street site anymore. But of course, plans, again, could change.
That is my understanding of the intentions. So I think that's wise to keep that, retain that previous order in addition to potentially approving these before us tonight.
Are they interested, are my refugees are bringing, or is it distributed to housing or what?
I cannot answer that question for you, councilman. I don't know the exact numbers to date.
All right.
I don't believe it's substantially more than what we were looking at.
I believe local media reported just last week that 22, a total of 22 individuals would be included in the next, coming to Norfolk within the next few weeks. Any other questions or discussions? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2022-31 is adopted.
And item 33, I would look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5798 to suspend certain applicable sections of Norfolk City Code addressing zoning and building requirements to allow for the placement of emergency temporary housing on private properties located at 923 East Norfolk Avenue, 105 Recovery Road, 107 Recovery Road, and 111 Recovery Road Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion for consideration of ordinance 5798.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion on this, counsel? Hearing none, your title, please.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to suspend certain applicable sections of Norfolk City Code addressing zoning and building requirements for a limited time to allow for the placement of emergency temporary housing on private properties located at 923 East Norfolk Avenue, 105 Recovery Road, 107 Recovery Road, and 111 Recovery Road in Norfolk, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5798 carries on first reading.
Your honor, I would propose that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance number 5798 on second and third.
Second.
Motion in second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5798 carries on second and third.
Lastly, item number 34, I would look for a motion to consider approval of a settlement agreement between Elkhorn Valley Ethanol LLC and the city of Norfolk related to Elkhorn Valley Ethanol's appeal of water and sewer assessments.
Make a motion.
Motion second. Because we are discussing litigation and potential settlement agreement that involves negotiation and settlement strategies for pending litigation, if the council sees appropriate, I would look for a motion to go into closed session for the protection of the public interest to discuss the settlement of pending litigation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second. Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Okay, again, for public record, this closed session is for the sole purpose of discussing the settlement of pending litigation. Okay, the only item discussed during closed session was pending litigation. May I have a motion to come out of closed session? Motion second. Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Okay, and back to the underlying motion on item 34, consideration of approval of settlement agreement. Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Okay, that concludes this meeting of the Norfolk City Council. We are adjourned.
Okay, so the settlement agreement, did it involve the potential public?